Good afternoon. The August 28th, 2023 board work session is now in order. Paul, roll call please.
Mr. Susan.
Here.
Ms. Wright.
Here.
Ms. Campbell.
Here.
Ms. Jenkins.
Here.
Mr. Trent.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item is a public hearing and rule development for revisions to policy 6180.01 allocation and use of sales surtax and new administrative procedure 6180.01. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Anybody on the floor? Anybody have any conversation? All right. With no, no hearing anything, we don't have a vote on it, so we're going to move on. The next topic is procurement process presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd ask Christine Rodriguez and Dawn Richard to come up and give you a short presentation on the procurement process. They have a PowerPoint downloaded. You should each have a hard copy of the presentation at your place.
Yep.
And they're going to walk us through the different steps that we take when we're awarding contracts and going through the purchasing and procurement process.
All right. Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Rendell, thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you today on our procurement process. As Dr. Rendell stated, my name is Christy Rodriguez. I'm the Director of Procurement and Distribution Services, and I've been in this role since April 2019. And this is actually my second time here at Brevard. I've been in public procurement for 18 years, and of those 18 years, 16 has been at three Florida school districts. And in, if I'm listing it in order, it started out with Osceola, Brevard, Orange, and then I came back to Brevard. Also with me is Dawn Richer, Procurement Manager, and Dawn has with BPS for over 11 years, and she also has 24 years of experience.
Ms. Rodriguez, I guess you could push your microphone just a little bit closer.
Sure.
That'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. So here's the agenda we're going to be covering today. And I did provide you copies of the PowerPoint in front of you. So here's a copy of our organizational chart. We have 24 positions in our department, 10 of which are full-time dedicated to procurement. So that includes eight procurement agents, one manager, which is Dawn, and one procurement clerk. I just wanted to highlight some of our accomplishments and affiliations. So I'm excited to share that we received the National Procurement Institute Achievement and Excellence in Procurement Award for 2023. That's hot off the press news. That makes four consecutive years for us. And for 2023, we were one of 30 public agencies in Florida to receive this award and one of 25 school districts across the country. So not too many agencies qualify for this. On a Florida level, we have received the Florida Association of Public Procurement Officials Award for 11 straight years and have won the Best Practice Award twice. Both awards include rigorous application processes and encourage the development of excellence as well as continuous process improvement. I also serve as the FAPo representative on the National Council for Public Procurement and Contracting. Members of our team are actively engaged at both the National Institute for Public Procurement level and the Central Florida Chapter. And a fun fact, the logo there in the center bottom, one of our procurement agents, Will Hensman, was involved in redesigning that logo. And obviously, you can see he made sure the Space Coast was represented. And several of our team members hold professional certifications, as you can see on the right, CPPB, CPPO, NIGP, CPP. And in order to qualify for these certifications, you have to qualify through a combination of formal education and professional training and years of working experience before you can even sit for the exam. And then the exam is a timed exam of 175 questions. So it's quite an accomplishment. Here's our mission statement. It is to serve, support, and collaborate with our stakeholders and each other, delivering strategic, timely, and sustainable procurement and distribution solutions that result in added value and ethical stewardship of district resources. A little bit about what procurement actually handles, we're responsible for the procurement of all commodities and contractual services, including construction. So we do this through competitive solicitations, which we'll talk about later, piggybacks, and state contracts. We do about 75 of those a year. We also process any exemptions, which would be sole source waivers and agreements, and we do about 720 of those a year. We also manage our active contracts. So the two that I just mentioned before, these are new contracts that are coming up that we're having to go out for. Active contracts are 1,100. So we approve and issue all purchase orders for the district. So for last year, that was almost 16,000 purchase orders with a total value of 200, or I'm sorry, 351 and a half million. We also manage the District P Card Program, which includes over 700 accounts, and we spend $25.5 million on our P Card Program. And that's 71,000 transactions. We also manage the vendor master records. So everyone, every vendor that gets paid by us, we have to go through a process of vendor application in W-9, and we have just under 9,000 active vendors. So the other arm of our department is distribution services. And in case you didn't know, I wanted to make sure you knew that that was part of procurement and what all we handle. So we handle courier services, DCRs, so all surplus property. We assist with moving. We assist with delivering, receiving, sorting, distributing, and picking up testing materials. And we have a limited number of stocked items. Of course, that rose when we were dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic, but thankfully, we haven't had to distribute as much stuff with that. We assist in emergency situations. So when we have a water line breakage, we deliver emergency water. And then, of course, in the event of a hurricane, we assist the EOC with delivering hurricane kits and cots. Special events takes up a lot of time. We deliver chairs and tables and coral risers and all of that for different events that are going on at the schools. Storage and distribution, so we assist the supply zone and Thrive By Five, and then we also run the mailroom here at ESS. So this is just a snapshot of all the different rules related to procurement that we have to comply with. So it's quite a bit. And going from left to right, it gets more specific as you go along and more localized. So any federal funding, we have to make sure we comply with federal regulations, many Florida statutes, and then State Board of Education rules, that's specific to Florida school districts. And then SREF is specific to Florida school district building and construction. And then, of course, the most local is our school board policy and procedures. So our procurement team is held to a very high standard of ethical conduct, and this includes complying with Florida statute, board policy, and administrative procedures, the NIGP Code of Ethics. And then those of us that have our professional certification, we also comply with the UPPCC Code of Ethics and then also the FAPo Code of Ethics. So our values and guiding principles are listed on the screen. So accountability, we take ownership and we're responsible to all stakeholders for our actions. Ethics, we do the right thing. Impartiality, unbiased decision-making and actions. Professionalism, upholding high standards of job performance and ethical behavior. Service, obligation to assist stakeholders. Transparency, easily accessible and understandable policies and procedures. All right. So kind of now to the meat and potatoes, now that I gave you an introduction. So competitive thresholds. In accordance with our board policy, and I think this presentation is great timing because soon you'll be moving on to the 6,000 policies, and so now you'll be a little more familiar with the policy. In accordance with our policy, commodities or contractual services must be procured from an approved contract if one is available. That's something that's relatively new. Last time we revised the policy, we put that in there because we didn't really have that in policy before. So schools or departments might want to buy from a different vendor. Of course, there are exceptions to every rule, and that is listed in the policy. So if there's significant savings that can be achieved, or for example, if it's to match existing, sometimes we have that with uniforms, then we can go off contract. If no contract is available and a competitive exemption is not available, then the following thresholds apply. So if it's less than 5,000, school or department just makes the best decision, they're closest to the need. If it's over 5,000 but less than 15,000, they get two quotes, 15 to 50, three quotes. And then over 50,000, we issue a formal competitive solicitation. And if you have any questions along the way, feel free to interject. So this slide just gives you a general overview of the procurement cycle and how the whole process works. Obviously, it starts with a need being identified. We go through a pre-solicitation phase, prepare the solicitation. We go through the process, the evaluation, award process, and then contract administration. And it just keeps going because obviously, at some point, the contract expires and we have to redo it. So formal solicitation types, there's four solicitation types that we do, and we're going to go over these in a little more detail. So the invitation to bid is when we can fully define the scope of work or have precise specifications. The award is made to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, and this is defined in the solicitation document. So if there are certain licenses required or certain qualifications, we define that all upfront. And responsive bidder pretty much means they responded exactly the way we asked them to. They filled out all their documents. They provided their licenses or whatnot. Responsible really looks at their capability to perform. This process takes about six to eight weeks. And this is a process map that tells you what our BPS process actually looks like. So it starts with a procurement request. Then we develop the ITB. We post the ITB. We have a pre-bid if applicable. We get questions in from all the vendors. Then we issue an addenda because that puts out questions to all the vendors at the same time. We have a public bid opening. We evaluate the bids. Then we post a notice of intended decision. That begins our protest period. So we resolve any issues that may arise. Then we prepare the recommendation form and the agenda. Then we submit the board agenda, and then it comes to you all for approval. And then we administer the contract.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course, please.
For the protest period, what is, is this, I'm guessing it's a website event that a vendor is going to go on and be able to check the status of the big summit?
So we, currently, we use VendorLink, and we post all of the documents on there. And once they have downloaded a solicitation, they're considered a plan holder, and they get email notifications of everything that we post.
Okay.
So when we, if we post a tab sheet and a notice of intended decision, they'll get an email.
Okay, perfect.
And when we post the notice of intended decision, that starts the clock for the protest period. The protest, whole process is very complicated and outlined in Florida statute and our policy and procedures, and they have 72 hours to protest.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. All right. So requests for proposals. This is used when a scope of work may not be fully defined, and we're looking for a solution, or when it's important that we evaluate more than just low price. So price is a factor, but it's not the sole determining factor. It's more of a best value decision. And with this process, we have an evaluation committee that is appointed to review and score the proposals and the presentations if we require presentations. So this process takes a little bit longer. It's nine to 12 weeks. The next type of solicitation is requests for qualifications, and there's two types. One is Consultants Competitive Negotiation Act, CCNA. And so we mostly work on these, well, we do work on these for Sue and with her team. And this is in accordance with Florida statute 287055 for the purchase of architectural, engineering, landscape, architectural, surveying, mapping, and construction management services. And the unique thing about this process is costs cannot be a factor when we're evaluating. It's not till the most qualified firm is selected that we work with them on determining their costs. The other type of RFQ is non-CCNA, and this would be used to pre-qualify vendors, ensure that they meet a minimum set of criteria. So examples of what we've done as RFQs in this way is yearbooks and school photography. So these also have evaluation committees that serve and review and score, and it takes nine to 12 weeks.
So Christy, on the first one, the CCNA, for those up with our construction, most of these, we have like a list, right? And so you're picking the three most qualified, for example, those construction, and that way Sue's got a project, then she's rotating through whoever's got time.
Correct. We have continuing service contracts in place for most of these, but we can only use those contracts for up to $4 million. And so when we have a larger project, we have to do a separate request for qualification.
So if we're renovating a couple of bathrooms, it would fall into that, but if we're building our new school here, we start from scratch with outside of this. But is it still considered this CCNA?
Yes.
Okay. So we're still just going with the most qualified, and then we negotiate the price with them separately?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And as far as the evaluation committee goes, I know I want to have a lot of questions. I'm sure you can light it up. How are you selecting the evaluation committee? Because these aren't necessarily procurement employees, correct?
Correct. Procurement serves on the committee. Well, we facilitate the committee. So we're non-voting. And I actually have a slide in here. Do you want to wait?
Yes.
Is that okay? Okay, all right. All right. So here's the process map for RFPs and RFQs. Because those processes are very similar, I just have one process map. But the difference is the beginning process is pretty much the same. It's just once the responses come in, then we have procurement review phase. So that's where we review them to make sure they're responsive. Occasionally, a vendor doesn't even make it past that point. And then we have an evaluation committee training and kickoff meeting with the committee. So we train everyone who serves on these committees, talk to them about the rules, what they're not supposed to do and all of that. And then we set them free with their homework, so to speak, and then they have their review period, which that can be one week, two weeks, sometimes more. It depends on the complexity and how many proposals we received. After that, we get together at a formal committee, committee meeting that is a publicly noticed meeting. So members from the public can attend, and they discuss the proposals. They score them in accordance with the RFP document and scoring criteria. And then we often call this meeting the shortlist meeting because depending on the ranking, the committee may want to have presentations or demos, conversations with the top-ranked firms. So then we schedule those. All right. Invitation to negotiate. This is used for the purchase of highly complex commodities and/or services such as technology or volatile markets. The procedures, this is a unique process because with the RFP and the RFQ, you don't negotiate a contract or anything with multiple firms. You just, once you get your top-ranked firm or firms, then you negotiate the contract. Part of this evaluation process is that you can negotiate with more than one company at the same time. So an example of when we did an ITN recently that I can remember, it's probably been a year or two, was our exclusive beverage contract because there's two companies, Coke and Pepsi. So we wanted to use this tool to make sure we got the best deal for the district. It also gives us the opportunity to further negotiate the scope of services. So because this one has a little more steps, it takes 16 to 20 weeks. And so we have a process map here. The process is very similar except for after the presentations or demos, we post a finalist list that we plan to negotiate with, and then we'd move into the negotiation phase. Whoops, went too fast. Here's that slide on evaluation committees. So as I mentioned before, all of the meetings are open to the public. The only ones that aren't, and this is in accordance with Florida statute, is the presentations and negotiations. So those are closed to the public for reasonable reasons. You know, you don't want your competitors hearing your secrets, I guess, or your competitive advantages. And, but these meetings are audio recorded. So then on developing the committee, the end-user department works with the procurement agent to determine a potential committee. And we try to ensure that it's cross-functional, which is sometimes challenging to pick someone from another area that doesn't know anything about it. But we try to make it cross-functional so that it's not five people from the same department. That involves getting help from our cabinet members to assign people. And we also want to make sure if there's any technical or software component that we have an ET representative on there. And so what our current process is, is once that committee is developed or in draft form, I send it to the cabinet member who's responsible, and I'm asking them to review it and also consult with other cabinet members to see if they feel they want to be represented on the committee. Any questions?
Yeah, I guess I do. All right. As far as the committees go, once someone has gone through the process of being selected for a committee, are they forever in like the procurement committee? are they forever in like the procurement committee pool, so to speak? Or are you doing this for literally every single contract that's coming through? You are going through this process of selecting a committee, going through the public process and picking that committee, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It's unique for every solicitation.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And don't we frequently with things that have to do, I think we've had, we have union representatives on some committees, don't we?
Absolutely. For certain solicitations, like a year or two ago, we redid almost every insurance product that we had. And I led a lot of those solicitations. And we ensured that we had a representative from BFT and 1010 on those committees. It just depends on what it is.
Right, right. I know, like our health insurance, I know they have sat on those for sure.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? I was just going to hold on mine to the final question.
Alright, so I didn't want to not take the opportunity to talk about the cone of silence. So this is something that we include in our solicitations and of course, it's in our board policy. So the cone of silence begins when the solicitation is posted and it ends when the board acts on the recommendation. And of course, public comments always allowed at the board meeting. So if someone feels they want to voice their opinion on the contract, that would be allowed. But the goal of this policy is to protect the integrity of the process from undue influence. So it prohibits any communication with vendors to the superintendent, staff. You know, they can't go and talk to the department and try to sway them one way or another, and also board members. So we just tell them all the communication has to flow through procurement. And that way, we can make sure all the vendors get the same information. And we, you know, we let vendors know any violations could cause in rejection of their proposal. And then in our last revision of our board policy, we included, you know, the violation by staff could result in disciplinary action, up to including dismissal.
And that's the email that we get every month, right, from you guys, of the list, the cone of silence list?
Yes. Alright, alternate source contracting. So we also have available to us that we can utilize state of Florida contracts and piggybacks. So we can piggyback from other government agencies or procurement cooperatives. And we are actually members of two local cooperatives, the Brevard County Public and Sea Purchasing Cooperative. So this was initiated probably 10 years ago or so. So that we here locally can pool our resources to get a better deal here in the county. And an example of a solicitation that we've been the lead on and our other local agencies benefit from it is for fuel. So we also are involved in the Florida School Procurement Consortium. And an example of that one, I think, has been our textbook disposal contract, so that we can pool resources there. So factors that we consider when determining if we're going to do a piggyback or utilize state contract would be economies of scale, savings, local market. Because, you know, we don't want to go piggyback a national cooperative if we have a lot of local vendors who would miss out on the opportunity. Also timeline and urgency.
Are there some statutory requirements for using a more local vendor? Or is it just really like we want to keep the business local because it benefits our local economy?
Correct. There is a very specific Florida statute that applies only to when we're purchasing personal property. And it's, one of the forms in our solicitation document deal with it. But basically, it says if there's an out-of-state vendor, that they have a local preference in their jurisdiction, we have to apply that same preference to our Florida vendors. So it's just a very, very specific scenario when it applies, but other than that, we don't have any preference. So of course, we have a process for these as well. We have a checklist that we have to follow, make sure we get all the documents and save them. For piggybacks, we complete an agreement with them. And then the approval is based on the total value of the contract.
Can a vendor ever refuse a piggyback? I mean, I guess they would if they've already agreed to one, but...
Yeah, I mean, I...
Because some of those piggybacks are actually out of state, right? I've seen contracts come through.
Some of them are, yeah. I think that's why we send them the agreement. I don't, I can't think of any off the top of my head where someone has.
Because they want our business?
Yeah. But yeah, I suppose they could say we're stretched too thin, we don't have the resources or whatnot. Alright, so we also have competitive exemptions available to us. And pretty much most of these, you can see I have these 6A numbers listed next to them. These are in our State Board of Education rules. A lot of them are also listed in Florida statute, but these are specific for school districts. So professional services, examples in this category are artistic services, lectures, legal services, educational services and copyrighted materials, so testing, software. And this is when the, we're buying from the producer, publisher, or copyright holder. Single and sole source processes, there's a full-blown process for that as well. And that includes posting it out to the public for seven business days. We have emergency procurements. That's where if we were in an emergency situation, we'd go to Dr. Rendell, get his approval, and then take it to you all to ratify. If grant or law prescribes who we need to contract with, that's also another exemption. Regulated utilities or government franchise services, information technology, insurance and risk management programs, or third-party administrators. There is an exception for group employee group insurance. And then any other exemptions that might be allowable to us. Just because we have these exemptions available to us doesn't mean it's always the best decision to use them. But we do have them as a tool available. So like, for example, with information technology, we do solicitations a lot of times for software and things like that. Alright, so procurement requests. Just to explain this, this is an internal process that was created in 2020. And this formalizes the end-user department or school asking procurement to take action. Prior to this, it was emails, things like that. And so this is the first step that we ask our end-users to take. And they have to do this for any agreements that require signature. It doesn't matter the dollar amount. If a school or department is being asked to sign something and it has terms and conditions on it, they have to go through this process. And then of course, if we need to initiate a solicitation, sole source, piggyback, or state contract, any exempt procurements with a value over $50,000. And then if they need our assistance with requesting quotes. They are, they don't have to come through us to get quotes, but if they, you know, it's a complicated situation and they need our help, we will assist with that. Alright, so agreements. All agreements have to be reviewed by procurement before signing. And I have presented this at the leadership team meetings, principals meetings. We just had bookkeeper and secretary training last week. So after several years, you know, I think that everybody's pretty good on complying with that. And if we need to go and work with legal, then we facilitate that. And the preferred method that we use for signing anymore is electronic. And then also in our board policy, we state that employees who enter into agreements without authority can be held personally liable. So we kind of explain that so that they're more cautious. So approval and signature authority, this is also outlined in our board policy. So board approval is of course for a value of $50,000 or more. The superintendent can sign $25,000 or more, less than 50. Cabinet can sign $5,000 or more, less than 25. And then department directors and principals have the authority to sign contracts less than $5,000. But they can only sign after we've reviewed it. So the agreement process, again, it starts with entering a procurement request. We work with the end-user to develop and negotiate the agreement. We have lots of legal approved templates that we use whenever possible. But sometimes the vendor will refuse to use ours, maybe they have too much terms and conditions. So then we use a vendor-provided agreement. Or if they request changes to our standard agreement, then we go through legal as well. And so of course, you know, legal's busy, so that can add a little bit of time to the process. So then once the agreement is finalized, it's sent to the vendor for review and signature. After the vendor signs, we work within those authority limits that I just explained. And procurement coordinates superintendent and board approval. So this is just a list of some resources that I've referenced. And also, I think that would be beneficial if you want more information. So from NIGP, they actually have a public procurement guide for elected and senior government officials, global best practices, position research and white papers. And then as I mentioned, these awards that we continue to earn each year, these are great to benchmark to make sure we're not falling behind, we're keeping up with the best practices and all of that. And then we also participate in professional association, training and networking. And then, as I mentioned, the Florida School Procurement Consortium, that is an amazing resource. Because within sometimes minutes, I can get responses from my peers all around the state. So it's really beneficial. Contacts, me, Dawn, and I didn't mention Sandy Kimpel, she is the Distribution Services Supervisor. Questions?
Okay, open up the floor to any questions for Ms. Rodriguez. Ms. Jennifer, do you want to go first, Ms. Jenkins?
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you, obviously, all of our departments are beholden to the taxpayer and responsibility of transparency and accountability. But you guys probably are on the front lines of that. And so I appreciate you, I respect you. And, you know, over the past two and a half years of being here, often we're getting emails as well as notifications from the dais of all the awards that you're getting. But you continue to go above and beyond, so thank you for that. Thank you for representing us so well. And congratulations in one in 25 districts in the entire country, that's pretty impressive. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Mr. Trent? Got anything?
No, again, thank you so much for doing what you're doing. We're happy you're going through all this and not having us to do everything, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Campbell?
Yeah, no, this was great. And I'm the one who requested this because it's been very, I admit, even after having been on the board for almost five years, I learned something new, a few things. But I love that in the mission statement stewardship, because that's a really important word and something that we are called to do, but we can really do it best when your department is functioning with excellence. And so very much appreciate that. I think I got all my other questions answered in the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Wright?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, sorry. I know, this is, I've been the one that's pulled things and questioned them, probably more so than anybody else that's been on the board since I've been here. But what is the email every month that you're getting about the cone of silence, Ms. Campbell?
You should be getting an email from, that has a, it's got an attachment and it has all the people we shouldn't be talking to.
I have never received that email, so I probably need to be. I don't know if you're getting a cone of silence email, but if not, maybe we need to make sure. I have not got that email ever.
I'll see if I can find when the last one went out.
Okay, and then, alright, so questions about this process? Because there's something that's even coming up tonight that we're going to be talking about. But like a school-initiated agreement, does that go through the procurement process as well? If they bring, if a school brings forward a contract to you that they want approved or they want the board to approve? How does that, how's that handled?
Yeah, so they would submit the procurement request. That, it depends on what it is. I mean, if it's something that we need to compete, then we would have to either do a solicitation. But if it's something that's below the threshold or it falls under an exemption, then again, it would start with the procurement request. We would work on the contract, work with legal if necessary. And then we would work with the appropriate cabinet member to get it submitted for an agenda, you know, a future board meeting.
And then when it comes to, you know, obviously, you spoke about the fact that you're following the state statutes. And I, one that just came out that was a big one, obviously, is that we're not allowed to work with any foreign-based companies that are owned by certain countries, not every country. Have you guys gone back and looked at our contracts that we have in place right now to make sure that we're not violating that? Because I know I pulled one that was a pretty hefty one that we found out after the fact that that would have been a no-fly zone, basically, for us to even use that contract had we approved it. So is that something that you guys are looking at?
So existing contracts? We have not initiated that as of yet. We were actually just talking about the language that needs to go into our future solicitations and contracts. So we'll be working with legal on that.
Okay, I think that's a huge one that probably needs to be looked at, just because we could be in some trouble there if we're not paying attention to that. I think, I don't think I have any other questions. I don't think I have any other questions at this moment. So thank you, I appreciate this presentation and all your diligence and how hard you guys are working. I know that it's a lot to go through this many contracts and review these things. Typically, when I pull them for question, it's not, not that I don't trust you, it's that I legitimately have questions about them and I need to bring them out and ask them in front of everybody kind of deal. So I appreciate your, you know, how diligent you guys are. You've been on it whenever I ask you for the matrices on the scoring of our vendors or our contracts. So I appreciate that too, so thank you.
Thank you.
Just if I can circle back to the thing, just because I did just do a quick search. The last one we got was January. So, and, but Kristi, we usually send them to Pam or Tammy. And so we probably need to get back into...
The groove.
Yeah, making sure those are coming out. Last three I got were January, then October before that, and August before that. So it's just an email, it says cone of silence.
What it is, is that anybody that's currently under contract or has engaged in the RFP process or RFI process, we want them to not be able to reach out to us to try to lobby us for that. There was a contract about six years, no, about nine years ago that they did not put the cone on. And they were hitting up board members and stuff like that. So for you, it's illegal for us to talk to anybody like during the middle of an RFP. So what you have to do is find, know that. And you wouldn't know that unless you had the list. So, which is part of the reason I'm trying to get that lobbyist registration, is there's a barrier of buffer for you. But the thing is, is that that's kind of what it is. And it kind of came out of, I requested, I started requesting vendors and stuff like that. Said, hey, can you give me a list of all the vendors so I know, stuff like that. And then we came up to that conclusion to do that. So thank you so much for doing that before. Anyways, if you're good, I'd like to ask some questions. So the contracts that we have, the threshold is $50,000. Is that yearly or is that complete? So like if the contract's for $50,000, or if it's for $35,000, but it's for three years, would that make it go above and have to go through the RFP process?
It's whatever the term of the contract and the value of that is.
Okay.
So that's the way the policy reads, it's kind of each contract. So yes, if it's multiple years and the total over multiple years only adds up to 50, it would still come to you all.
And just for a process, if the superintendent signs something for a contract, right? And it's under the $50,000 and it's within his scope of doing so, is that something that you always review? So you review every single contract?
Yes.
And is there a way, because this was a part of a conversation before, that some of our board members had some concern over a contract that one of our superintendents prior to Dr. Rendell was going after? Is there a way to make sure that those kind of come before the board? Can we bring those as an informational item just so that we know? Does that make sense to you?
Only contracts that the superintendent signs?
No, I'm just trying to find a loop so that we can see them. Dr. Rendell, does that make sense to you? Because there was a couple that we're going through years ago. So like if the superintendent signs a contract with a company that is under the threshold of going to the RFP process, does that have to come before the board? And if it doesn't, then is there a way that we can start doing that? Not that Dr. Rendell would do that in any way. I just know that in the past, we've had some of those. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I think the only way to ensure that happens is to lower the threshold of my spending authority. I mean, Paul can weigh in on that.
No, I wouldn't say that we wouldn't be able to approve it. It's just an informational item that you signed it. Does that make sense? That's all. I wouldn't do it for the idea, it's just so that we can keep that transparency and stuff, to make sure that everybody's on the open up, that's all. Does that make sense? You guys follow that?
So you just want to be informed, you don't necessarily want approval?
Yeah. Right, because there's times when the, the reason that that is there is because the superintendent has to have, there's times when he has to pay for things and he shouldn't have to wait. Like you have to give him that authority because he is our superintendent to do that. We don't want to impede that, we just want to make sure that if something went through, that we saw it, that's all. And it's not in a way for us to say, hey, we're not going to vote for that. It's already been approved, it's already been spent probably by the time it gets to us, but we just need to know that. I don't know if there's another way, but I was just trying to say, hey, you know what I mean? And I don't know if Dr. Rendell even does any of that, but just to make sure that, you know, that we know.
Yeah, in a previous district, I think we used to do an addendum to the board agenda.
That's it.
That listed any contracts that were approved under $50,000 and their superintendent's spending authority or something like that.
And then also cabinet. So if there's ones that cabinet does that are under the $25,000, we can do something like that too.
It was an addendum, I'm pretty sure I can go look it up.
And it's not a, and it's not a way for us to stop it. It's just a way for us to know, hey, they went ahead and purchased this and we just need to know. And it's not a, and it's not a way for us to stop it. It's just a way for us to know, hey, they went ahead and purchased this and we just need to know about it. That's all.
Okay.
Okay?
Because ultimately, we give approval through the budget process. But I hear what you're saying. You're asking for specific feedback, which.
Budget process, we give a certain allotted amount of money. If they go sign a 25, $24,000 contract somewhere, it's not generally inside of our budget. We want to be able to tell if they did that. That's all. Go ahead, Ms. Wright. I've got all mine written down, so you go ahead.
So if, if, in theory, like you just said, a $24,000 contract gets approved, and let's say that that contract now is amended and now it's an extra $24,000 additional dollars. So it's now bumped it over that threshold of 25,000. Does that now change the whole dynamic of it or?
So it's actually in our board policy that amendments follow the same approval authority unless the amendment puts it into another threshold.
Okay.
So if Dr. Rindell signs something within his threshold and then we needed to amend it, and now it's over 50, it would come to the board.
Okay, thank you for the clarification on that.
Okay.
I have a follow-up to something that Ms. Wright brought up and then asked if you guys were reviewing. So the, the law that went into effect in July about certain outside country contracts is for renewal, extension and new contracts. It's not for current, because that would be wildly insane to go back and undo all those and then re-procure them all. So just, just throwing that out there for the public that's paying attention.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. I think it's still, I think we have board agreement that we should review all of our policies now so that we know ahead of time, before they come up for procurement, to let them know that, hey, and there may be some that we might want to review. So if that's something that you guys, I know you're already starting to do that, but that would be something that we would want to do. And it would help if.
So I have a follow-up question.
It would help if the Department of Education could give us some guidance in that, too. Because having you guys look for some sort of, you know, conversation wrapped around like, you guys, where is your foreign, you know what I mean? Like it's a lot of work for what, to look at. We have 40,000 vendors.
Right. And what is the percentage of your base?
To look and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Anyway, so.
And I believe DMS is supposed to publish a report, so we'll go back and see if that report and that link has even been developed, because that will make it a lot easier for us.
So, perfect. But I, I think that they could do a better job of helping us out. As far as the committee, so we have a RFP, RFI, RFQ committees, right? And so what we have is, is outside experience. What I came across in some of the others, and I have that on, I came across some of the other municipalities and stuff like that, where they actually bring in outside experts as a part of their RFP process. So in some of our school districts in the south and some of our counties, what they'll do is they'll reach out to other municipalities. Like, say for instance, we had an insurance contract coming up. Might want to see if Jerry Visco across the street, who's been doing insurance for 30 years, may want to come over and be a part of it to lend some sort of expertise to it. There's other places like that, a small city may have somebody in there, because ultimately, we want to try to get what's the most, you know what I mean? The best people to be inside that, that procurement process. And I think that having those kind of opportunities, I just wanted to kind of offer that up to you. When we go to the, the selection of individuals, so we have, how far out ahead are you letting them know? Like, so say an insurance one, right, like a big one. When are we letting them know, like the RFP's coming in November? We kind of know that because you're looking at contracts ahead. The whole year we've got, January through, through December, these are the contracts coming up. You know, the majority of them probably don't need to be concerned about huge like knowledge and stuff like that. But there are some that get to that elevation of 10, $20 million. How do we let them know ahead of time? Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, so we normally start talking with the end user about who should be on the committee when we're in the middle of draft, drafting the solicitation before it's posted. Ideally, because so many people are, especially our higher, higher level folks, their calendars are filled up. So we have to get on their calendars ahead of time.
Yeah.
So that's when we would really start talking about it.
Not sure if we ever wanted to, but maybe in the beginning of the year, like now, if there was a dead time, we may want to look at the contracts and say, hey, the insurance one's coming up in March. Maybe there's an opportunity now to say, well, we know these people. We know Ms. Gipio is going to be on there. But hey, maybe we can reach out to some others. Just maybe if there's a level of more than $5 million that the contract's going to be worth, that we do something like that, just to start a pre-education. Because I also saw in some of the other districts, they have like a pre-education where they bring in the, some of the people and they kind of educate them on the past practice, practices and stuff like that, so they understand the sequence of about what's about to happen. Just helps them out. And I can work with you offline about that. It might be something you guys don't know, but just an idea, that's all.
Would that be different from what she mentioned in the presentation that they already do in the training of the committee members?
Yeah, it's a little bit different. So, thank you. So the other thing is, is that, so do all contracts that go through our school, our school districts, are those reviewed by Paul? Or do they get reviewed by you? Like, who does that?
They all come through procurement and we use our legal approved template. So we have a regular agreement. We have an independent contractor agreement. We have a software license addendum template. So we have various templates that have already been approved through legal. And if the vendor is willing to sign our agreement with no changes, it doesn't have to go through his office.
There you go.
If they have any changes to that, or they provide us their agreement, then we have to go through legal.
That's when Paul has to come involved and get it and go through it. Okay, all right. And then we had, and I'd like to give Ms. Jenkins a chance to speak to the Chinese business portion in just a second. But as far as, when, we pulled that one before, we kind of diverted a major disaster by, by getting that out ahead of time. Is there any, like, we utilize like Zoom and stuff like that, right? And that's, that's a foreign Chinese-based organization that the Kennedy Space Center doesn't use and stuff like that. If there's anything that we can do to help you in that, like if there's conversations that Dr. Rindell can ask to the OE and stuff like that, that'd be great, too. Just because it's difficult to even know where they are. Because that one, I got approached by after we had done that, had said that only a portion of their headquarters was in China. And I was like, oh, my gosh, this is like, it's kind of insane. So Ms. Jenkins, you had said earlier that you wanted to speak to us.
There was a lot thrown out there. So I think I'm going to remind the board that everyone has a role in this district and are experts in their areas. Making a blanket statement about one of our contracts with a vendor such as Zoom being foreign-owned, as if our district isn't looking into that or know that. I think we should be careful what we're saying out loud. I think we have IT back here who can probably speak to that, the validity of that statement. What, what I was saying before was that it sounded like we were asking the procurement department to review all of our existing contracts for foreign entities, and that is not necessary nor feasible or required. They are well aware of the law change, which will then be in policy change, and they will do so going forward. That is the statement that I am making. I didn't need a clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. It's very easy to find out if Zoom is a foreign-based company. And I asked just so you can remember. Point of order, Ms. Jenkins, please don't cut me off. No?
Mr. Susan.
Paul, please note.
Respectfully.
Paul, please note and explain that I am allowed to speak without that. Paul, can you help out here, Paul?
Respectfully.
Thank you, Paul. Ms. Jenkins, Paul again? Paul, again? Can you explain to Ms. Jenkins the proper process, Mr. Gibbs?
Everybody should speak one at a time.
Everybody.
Wouldn't acknowledge?
Thank you. So basically, I had, just a point of order, is I had asked for IT to look into our vendors' previous board meeting. I had said, hey, can we take a look at these? That's all. And so that was one that I know. When I tried to do a conference call up at Kennedy Space Center, I was told that I couldn't use them. And there was a major issue because we were 30 minutes from launch for the, for the big thing that I was doing. And I asked him, I said, why? And they said, because of the relationship with the foreign entities that they have. So they only use Teams out there. So that, that's all. It was just a, just a thing. And we just approved the contract and I had spoken to him about it and talked about it. So anyways, the next thing is, is governmental changes. So when these kind of governmental changes come, Ms. Christie, how, how is our community, how are we, you know, letting you know what's coming down the pipe? Because I have a feeling that this is something that we have, could do a better job of. Like, here you are as an entity out there. We have all these changes that are coming in July and October and everything else. Is there something we can do better? Because we receive statutory information from our lobbyists in a big form. We could ask them if there's anything. Does that make sense to you? Because I feel like I don't want you to have to be behind the gun as far as all of the, you know what I mean? Is there something we can do better?
I mean, I think Paul and the superintendent and, and other cabinet members keep us pretty well informed. So, but of course, welcome for any advance information, you know.
Through your procurement association, you guys are probably really talking.
We have a lot of legislative updates on, on various boards through NIGP and then Florida as well.
You guys are probably lobbying against some of those changes and stuff like that. So, no, okay. I just didn't know. It was something that I was going to ask you. And then one of the things we're going to be talking about later on today, and, you know, I don't expect you to give a reason or anything like that right now. But what I was trying to do is, is in some of the other areas across the state, we have a contract. And it says, so we're getting ready to do like a lobbyist registration, right? So if you're going to come in and speak to any of us, cabinet members, superintendent, any of that, you have to register, right? Real easy process. The other side of that is, is that if somebody's going to be making money off of a contract because of that relationship, I've seen it to where they'll put at the bottom, are, is there any other entities that you're paying commissions to for this, this item? It basically closes the loop for any of these people that may be, and I see it in many of the other counties, where some people will have influence and they'll shepherd something through, and then all of a sudden, the county wants to know if there's any of that going on. So I might ask you about that later on, but I was just kind of putting it into your court to think about it. And then for me, I, I really appreciate you. You and I know that we've, every time I've ever had a question, I've come in, you've, all the way back from when we used to have those Cigna contracts with Langdorff and stuff like that. And you've always been transparent, upfront and hardworking. And if there's something that's amiss, you always say, hey, that's a good opportunity to look through and we can move forward. And I really appreciate that. You've, you've been amazing. And I, I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
And then, I'm good. Anybody else have any other?
I just want to add that I'm just one person and I have a really great team. Dawn and our senior procurement agents, all of our team members and our distribution staff as well. So I just want to give them the credit.
Hey, just for, Mr. Susan, I want to add for the board's information, if you haven't noticed it, as we're going through the contracts on the agenda, one of the things that got added, I think in my first year on the board, there's some boxes up at the top that talk about legal review required and did they use the template? So that's a good thing, because if you can see, oh, they use the template, you don't, you can kind of avoid reading every single little word because it's the same as the last 15 contracts that you approved. So, or if the legal review is required, it'll, it'll, it usually has it on the agenda item, but it also lists it on the, on the contract or the, what do you call that? Whatever the sheet is called on the, when you pull up the attachment.
Yeah, there's checkboxes and there's a sentence. So you have it in two spots.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Last topic is lobbyist registration discussion. Board members, you've received a couple over the last couple of days. You've received a couple of possible policies. What we had given direction to Paul and them was to kind of mimic the county, because Brevard County was pretty simple. There was no fee attached to it. It makes you register and there's other things that basically say, you know, if there's a, if you break the law or whatever, there's a notice that goes out. It's real simple and it's not, you know, some sort of overarching monster. And I thought that was a good one to start with. I also asked Paul if he could grab the Neola template, if there was one out there. Paul, have you had a chance? I know, what's that? All right. So like across the state, like Hillsborough Public Schools has like 63-something, so it's probably going to be where we put it. Miami-Dade Schools has a, a couple of them. But in general, I think right now, all they're looking for is, is direction as to what we think we could do. And as the person that brought this up and brought it forward, I think the easiest way would be to mirror Brevard County Government's lobbyist registration, which is pretty simple, and have Paul bring that back as far as a recommendation for policy. Does that make sense? Or unless anybody else would like to add anything. Many of the other ones are like really conducive. Like you can see what they're dealing with in Hillsborough, Miami-Dade, Orange County and Broward County and stuff like that, those school districts, some stuff.
I'm not necessarily saying I'm opposed to that, but this came through while we were in our executive session. So honestly, I have not had a chance to review all of it.
Yeah, that came in at 11:35.
So they came in at like 11:35. So there's several attachments that are there. So just to be able to read them and see, because there might be some really valuable things that we need to add from some of the other counties into, to ours. Because the, the county's going to be a little different than the school board. It's still government. But if you wouldn't mind just giving us a little bit more time to review it, I would appreciate that.
How about we bring it back on the 22nd, so you guys have time? And then Paul, if, if we can send one, you know, I think we had a couple of emails, if there's any questions to any of the sections. Absolutely. I just think that, I think right now the simpler is better, but if there's anything anybody wants to put in there, it's pretty easy. Does anybody else have any conversations wrapped around this? No? No? Okay. Does any other board member have anything further to discuss?
I do. I'm going to ask you to respectfully acknowledge the fact that I am a 36-year-old woman who is equally elected to this position as you. And you do not need to re-clarify my statements. You do not need to mansplain my statements. And you do not need to do so after every time I speak and go on a rant for 10 minutes after, so I cannot say something back. You have a right to disagree. You have a right to say the opposite. But you have no right to cut me off or stop me from rebuttling what you're saying. Mr. Susan, you do not do the same for Mrs. Wright. I expect the same for me.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Is there no further business?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
If I could ask the board's direction, just to make sure. So we have another work session scheduled next Tuesday. And I believe the focus of that is just to pick up the 5,000 policies and keep moving on. And then another workshop on the, work session on the 22nd. So that'll be topic-related stuff. So we're going to keep the policies, like on those alternate days. Just want to make sure staff knows what to prepare for.
Yeah, and I wanted to give Dr. Rindell a lot of credit for his work. We had spoken about, hey, now that we have a lot of these starting to go through, let's start getting them moving because we want to get them done as fast as possible and, and the backend coming up. So he, he actually has a system in place. So I want to say thank you so much for that, Dr. Rindell, to make sure that happens. Ms. Campbell, you got something to say?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if we make it through the 5,000, assuming you make it through the 5,000s on the 15th, then are we, is our plan to tackle the 6,000s starting on the 29th?
Yep.
Okay. However much we can get done in three hours. I will say, I did ask, I, I talked to Paul real quick. We had postponed his annual review because of the transition personnel. But we probably need to plug that in at some point. And he suggested we could add it to one of our off Tuesdays. But I don't know. I don't know how long it'll, but that's important to do. So even if we insert it in the middle of some 6,000s or whatever.
Or if we, you know, we can, we can look at that or possibly, I mean, the 29th is the 6,000, so we can either put it there or we can look at one of the future dates, maybe early September or something like that.
And I don't even know if everybody, I know I didn't get, I didn't submit mine yet because we, I'm a last-minute person. So I need to, we need a deadline, because I like to do it the day before the deadline. I know, but then we move the deadline.
And I think, just so everybody understands and they don't, you know, think there's any kind of bizarre stuff, with the changeover of superintendent, with the changeover of staff, with the changeover of Ms.
Our assistant.
Ms. McGuire, I mean, it's just been kind of a crazy time. So Ms. Lena, I think, is in a good spot to start doing that. So I'll work with her on getting that forward. I also wanted to mention that we have the athletics coming forward in the next meeting. So if you guys have any questions wrapped around that, pay a little bit of attention to it, because there's some great things that they put together, so.
Yeah. I meant to bring this up a while ago and I haven't. So there were some board members that decided not to renew their FSBA membership. And I think it was just me and Ms. Jenkins that decided that we weren't going to do that. I wanted to get guidance on this and I had talked to Dr. Rindell about it and he suggested I mention it to you guys. There is a local organization in the north end of the county who is providing basically mentorship in our, in our schools with our students. And they're non-for-profit. And I wanted to find out from the board if the board felt comfortable. I would like to give, instead of my FSBA dues, give him those funds so that that non-for-profit can keep running and sending in counselor, not counselors, mentors to, to work alongside children. And I can send you information about the individual, just so you can see him. He's been featured on the news and everything else. But I just wanted to kind of put that bug in your ear, because he is truly making a difference in our community. He's someone who is going above and beyond. He's a police officer, runs a non-for-profit with all that free time he does not have and really making a difference in children's lives. And so I thought, hey, that's a much better use right here in our own town of those funds, rather than, than something that I may not partake in as far as the FSBA dues go. So just wanted to throw that out there. It can be a conversation we have or not.
If anybody has any disagreement with it, we can talk about it and then give it to the next meeting. I'm okay with it. I think that if they're your funds and you feel comfortable with doing it, then that's okay with me. But does anybody have like a serious objection to it?
Yeah. And not to whatever you're speaking about, because I don't even know the organization you're speaking about. But they're not our funds. And that's not what they're allocated for. So I'm, I'm uncomfortable with that. I, again, not with the organization that you're speaking of, because I really don't even know what it is. But that just, that's not our money to just spend how we want to spend it. It's not a budget for us to, to dish out like that. So it makes me uncomfortable. I don't like it.
I don't like it.
I would remind you, Ms. Jenkins, that we had prior conversations before you came on the board that had allowed us to take those and utilize them in different ways. Part of that is, is to support organizations, groups and stuff like that, and be a part of associations and be a part of those things. So if you have a major objection, we can maybe, if you're okay with waiting two weeks, then we can bring it.
Absolutely. And I, what I'll do in the meantime is I'll send everyone the link that just kind of shows what the organization is, so that you can kind of get a feeling for it. I understand that it's something out in left field and you're going, what's going on here? Why are you bringing this forward?
Yeah.
But I want you to see it, because honestly, for me, I think tax-funded school district funds should serve our local county and they should serve our children. And this guy is doing exactly that. And so that's why I really want to see that organization succeed. But I would love to share it with you, because I think you would actually be really encouraged by the individual himself. And that's completely fine, we can come back and talk about it further.
So I also would like to say that that might have been a conversation when I wasn't on the board, but I am on the board. And that means that at least three people weren't on the board when that conversation happened. And we did have this very much, very conversation about our policies and the zeros and the 1,000s. And we talked about this and we were pretty clear about it. So it's not as simple as this is what we discuss and what we're going to do. This is definitely a bigger conversation that we need to have. And again, no offense to this person or this organization, because again, I don't know what it is. Just the process makes no sense to me. It is not our funds to just divvy out. This isn't asking to pay for a registration to be part of an organization. That's a very different purpose.
So I think that what people are doing with the north end of the county sounds great. And I, you know, it sounds like something, if it's a nonprofit, that it was something that people need to donate to. I do have a concern, and you mentioned what would be good for the county. I think whether it's through FSBA or another organization, the board members participating in professional development and in organizations, whether it's FSBA, because to me, that, that fund, when it goes, when my, the fees that under my, under my name go to FSBA, that benefits the county, benefits the district, our students and our employees and the rest of you guys, because I am a more informed, more educated, more connected to other school boards across the state. So I'm, you know, we're kind of groupthink, not groupthink, that's the wrong word. Just like our procurement, you know, I'm getting information about things. I'm getting notified, hey, did you see this article? Do you see this initiative? That's what that professional development goes to, whether it's FSBA or another organization. I, I was, the time when there was, where board members were given a certain allotment of money to use in their districts how they saw fit, it was a one-time thing that was previous to me. I've heard a lot of controversy that came out of it, I mentioned that before. So I, when we start going, I'm going to spend my money this way, I'm going to spend my money that way, we can have that conversation, but I, when the, when the commissioners do that, because they do that sometimes, they do that with their COVID money, I can't remember how many millions each county commissioner got, $5 million to kind of figure out what they want to do, that caused a lot of stir. And there's actually, even though this would absolutely not be an abuse, right? Because you're somebody who's pouring back into our kids, there's the potential for that. And we have to think, I like to think outside of just the five of us, but what are we setting up for future board members? And is there a potential for our people to play favorites, to support, you know, this, that, the other? And, and to me, every dollar that, that we make decisions on as a board, our budget that we approve, it's the five of us making that decision. And I know you're coming to us asking, right?
Right. Exactly what the conversation's happening.
Right. But the conversation is about, are we going to prove that we should each have the freedom to do it how we want? And I don't know that I'm going to be on board with that at any time, but if we can make the decision together, hey, board, we have some left over at the end of the year because everybody didn't join FSBA or everybody didn't use all their travel budget, can we, you know, rather than going back into the general fund for Cindy to find a good purpose to use it, which she always will, can we say, hey, we've got $5,000 left or $2,000 left, let's, let's pick an organization? I don't know, there would need to check on the legalities of that, but can we do that? I would feel more comfortable with that and making that decision together as a board, rather than ever having, you know, something kind of bigger like that, that we're just each getting our own kitty to dispense with at how we see fit. We've had, we have had those conversations since I've been on the board and I've not been super fan of that.
So I would, I would say being the board member that was actually here when that allocation went out, it went really well.
Well, that's not what I.
So hang on, Ms. Campbell, what you hear and what actually happened as being a board member on here.
From your perspective.
Ms. Campbell, I'm Ms. Campbell, please.
Don't you do the same thing. You're mansplaining it.
No, no. What I'm trying to do is explain to you that as the board member, that I sat here and we went through it, there are so many projects that we were a part of that were tremendous. Like Croton Elementary School had not had their basketball courts recovered in so long, that the point was, is that those kids were able to recover that and they were able to redo that. And that changed the life of a 30-life veteran teacher that was the PE teacher there. There were so many positive things that came out of that. And I just don't want to sit here anymore and allow what happened when you weren't on the board, when I was on the board, that I can speak to the fact that these are good opportunities for people to spend, to spend money on, to support. Because sometimes they can't get up over the top of the finish line. Sometimes there's projects, there's basketball courts right now that have rust that are falling down, there's all kinds of stuff. And if we had a little bit of money that we wanted to allocate to that, or a not-for-profit that's going to help that, that I believe in. And what I would like to do is not only bring this forward as an idea, but then also bring forward the idea that we do go forward with some sort of a section, so that we can fund sort of projects like this. So then maybe the idea isn't that what we don't spend, we end up spending, but you do have a section that you're able to bring forward for projects, community-based stuff, so that you can stir some things. Because ultimately, we are in charge of the entire budget, but there are some needs and stuff like that, but having that allocation is, is really a good thing. So I wanted to give you an.
Absolutely.
Hang on, Ms. Campbell, let me finish. The bottom line is, is that I have a feeling that if done correctly, it's done in almost every city, every county, they have allocations for funds to give out to the people. So that, that literally is done all over the place and it's a good thing. I think we can have a discussion about it. And so when this came up, I was willing to just say, hey, Ms. Wright, if nobody had any issues, but now that we don't have any issues, we can move forward.
Saying you discussed it forward today?
Bringing it up at the next meeting with, so that we can discuss.
So you did discuss it forward today. Thank you for making that clear to the public.
It sounds, it sounds like it's a further discussion that we need to have. And that's fine.
Can we have the discussion?
Hang on, it's a big, because it's a bigger discussion now, because you brought up some things. And I want to say, yes, it is absolutely a good thing for us to be able to meet the needs of our schools, but we have that process in place. We have it through the school initiated, and a project, the SIP, we have it. What this, what that creates, and I, I'm sure absolutely for the people who were the winners in that situation, it was great for them, it was great for the board members to feel good about being, doing good things. My perspective is from the people who were not the winners. And we have a process in place that Sue's Department, we talked about facilities, that Sue's Department has an evaluation committee. And we have, we have lots of schools with needs, but we have a process that's not just driven by who gets to a board member's ear, that those needs get met, but more, we have a facilities evaluation tool that was done completely in 2019 and it's done a regular basis. So we, we know how every scoreboard, every playground, every parking lot looks, and we put the funds first at the schools that have the worst need. Where we have failing systems, could we go there first? And then when it comes to playgrounds and matching grants, we've done things like put more matching funds to our Title I schools, who it would take them a whole lot longer to do their fundraising, and so they get a larger match. We have those processes in place that are without bias. I don't want to, I don't want to have any kind of system in place where it depends on who is the squeakiest wheel to any particular board member's ear, and they're the ones who are going to get the needs met. I don't like that. I don't think that's fair. I think we're walking on, and so, so the negative, I'm sure it was positive for some people, but when I got on the board and I, I went to one of my school visits and they said, hey, I, I don't, if you get the money, we could really use this. And I was like, okay. So I go to the superintendent, I say, hey, do we have money that we're going? Oh, no, 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 that was a couple years ago and it didn't, didn't go very well, because, because we have situations like that, where that school goes, well, hey, I heard Sotus and says school got this done, why don't I get something done? So that is my perspective, and you can have your perspective, but my perspective is not false.